We're called to order. We have a quorum with all members present. It's a great day in Kershaw County and a great day in this All-America county. We have some wonderful people here today, and we want to get quickly to that point in the agenda. But unfortunately, we're still being ravaged by the COVID virus, and Russell reports even a member of his own company has passed. So I ask you all to bow your heads in a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you. We're now called to order, and with the invocation and pledge, we turn to Councilman Tom Gardner. Would you all please stand?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for a great day in Kershaw County. We thank you for the opportunities afforded us. We thank you for this council and the work they do. We thank you for our staff and our great employees. We do ask a special prayer for those affected by COVID and a special blessing on those who have lost loved ones to it. Our Father, as we do our county's business, we ask for your guidance, your wisdom, your discernment. We ask these things in your son's name.
Amen.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Tom. And Reverend Snodgrass, you might want to pick up some points there from Mr. Gardner.
Oh, absolutely.
We move now to public comments. Mr. DeBose, do we have anybody signed up?
Mr. Chairman, one person has signed up, and that is Tom Webb III.
Excellent. Hey, Tom, come on up. And Tom, you know the rules, a routine that's limited to roughly five minutes, focused on the topic. I wish it could be question and answer, but it is not under our agenda, and kindly keep it on topic. Thank you, sir.
Here's my card, a party I used to be in, Libertarian Party, actually a dues-paying member of Libertarian Party. And what I say here reflects that sometimes, but I dropped out. I won't give them any dues anymore. The leadership here in South Carolina told me several years ago that we're all citizens of the world and we don't need a border anymore. So goodbye Libertarian Party. There are crackpots in there, as I guess there are everywhere. But I wanted to speak about banning books a little bit. And being a libertarian, I really don't like the idea of banning books, but sometimes maybe it's necessary or something in between where if a child wants to buy a book or check out a book from a library, they should have parental consent. There are some things that parents, if they knew what they were doing, really wouldn't want their children to engage in. So I'm going to read some of this just to make sure I don't miss anything. I'll speak about the contention of book banning and not about the people, pros or con. And should the government or anyone in government play a part in banning, who should judge and by what criteria? Certainly, parents should have some say concerning their children. They always have. I hope they always will. And so we already have some censoring on movies. They get a rating. Why not written items, written material? And the Internet, of course, already doesn't allow pornography. It's criminal, and you can't solicit minors on there, though a church that I used to attend there, pastor got into a heap of trouble because he was soliciting minors on the Internet. So he was fired, and the church changed its name. And the government actually had something to do with that. He spent some time in prison for it. That comes from the government. I don't want to claim that I know where to draw the line for other people, but I don't appreciate lines being drawn through gray areas as though cultural norms don't matter. When it comes to parents and their children, parents should be encouraged to be very active. It's still America, I hope, still will be for a while. So I'll mention two book bannings. In one case, my uncle, who served in World War II in Europe, banned my book, Mein Kampf, that little paperback that I had. And he saw it, and he grabbed it, and he destroyed it, and I never got a chance to read it. So I still haven't read it. The other book that I participated in banning is one that I banned myself. I destroyed it. I picked it up somewhere. I don't even remember where now. It was a good-looking book, well-made, fairly large. But thumbing through it, it was shocking. Diagrams and explanations on the most horrible ways to torture people, mostly women and children. I wouldn't read it. It was mind poison, and I wouldn't want anybody else to read it. It was written by Marquay de Saad, late in the 1700s, French nobleman who actually practiced the things that were in this book, torture. And he did that for years and years, and he published some books. He wouldn't want children to see any of that. I wouldn't want anybody to see it. So he finished his life in a mental institute, not because maybe he was crazy, it's because he was so wicked. He was brought up on charges. They couldn't find him guilty in France, just before the French Revolution. But he went on to live through all of that, and they put him in the mental hospital, and they actually used him as an executioner. If they had somebody they wanted to get rid of that they were claiming was crazy because they were not going along with the political agenda, they would put them in the room with him, and lo and behold, pretty soon they were dead. Marquay de Saad. This is where we get our word sadism or sadism, to say that somebody is a sadist. It's a sexual perversion in one of the definitions, where people get some kind of sexual gratification out of torturing somebody else. The other definition doesn't include the sexual part, but there's gratification, there's fun in torturing people. This guy was really off his rocker far enough to be doing that sort of thing. So his books were banned all over Europe. He wrote Private Life of Marquay de Saad and another book, The Many Pleasures of the Flesh, Afternoon Delight, and How to Serve Tea Properly. And he invented torture machines. So all of these things were really perverted, really bad stuff. It's mind poison. You wouldn't want somebody who might have had just a little bit of a mental problem to read these things. He might act this stuff out. So these books were banned. They're still banned. The Catholic Church still got them on a banned list. England, France, he was French, and French are the ones that locked him up. So all of it mind poison. No gray area here, in my opinion, but there are plenty of bad ideas these days that sneak into our minds and especially young minds from all sorts of media. A portion of our people might disagree with me on any of this that I've just said, but I celebrate their ability to do so, being a libertarian especially. And so I'll just tell you briefly about my book burning. This book that I didn't want anybody else to ever see again. I dropped it in a five-gallon bucket and filled it with water, figuring this would destroy it. But after a few days, I pulled it out, and you could still thumb through, and the pages would turn. So I decided to burn it, and it was rather difficult to burn because it was soaking wet, but I managed. It needed to go. So I'm sure that the books that we're all thinking about right now, they're not anything like the Saad's book. Parents should be in charge of what their children get to see, and maybe even government on occasion, even though I rather fear that. Thank you anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. DeBose?
That concludes the sign-up list.
All right, and that concludes public comments. We move to adoption of the agenda. It's on the screen. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gardner. Any discussion? Seeing there is none, we move to a vote. All those in favor, so signify, and it's unanimous. And we move now to the proclamation I've been looking forward to. It's a proclamation honoring Zairek Bradford. It's Tab A and Page 4. There you are. Thank you, Danny. It's up on the screen, too. With that, I'm going to read it as we did before, and then I'll seek a motion, and we can move into discussion. But I also want to say that we're welcoming Ted Hanley here today from the Alumni Association, and we've got another presentation as a part of that. Ted, great to see you. Let me read this, and we'll move right into it. "A proclamation honoring Zairek Bradford. Whereas Kershaw County is an All-America county with a vision to be a great place to live, work, study, worship, and raise great kids as productive citizens; and whereas the county, city, school district, and sheriff's office and the Alumni Association have consistently supported the growth and education of terrific, I mean terrific, young men and ladies in the Boys Club and Girls Club under the direction of Brian Mays, who is here with us today. Whereas the Jackson alumni have singled out Zairek Bradford for particular honors as a graduating senior at Camden High School. He is president of the Jackson Teen Center Keystone Club, also oversees the Jackson Teen Centers. Make it a conversation project. Whereas in addition to these roles, Zairek is heading an effort to promote more competitive youth basketball in Kershaw County. The instituted Team 803 bringing next-generation, next-level open run for basketball players in the county. Now therefore, Kershaw County Council recognizes Zairek Bradford for his outstanding contributions to his community, and the council wishes him continued service and success in Kershaw County and in his chosen career going forward." With that, let me have a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Snodgrass, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. With that, any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Please, sir.
Council members, I'll tell you, I was excited to see this on the agenda. A few months ago, I'd received a text message from someone connected in my church, a young man from my church, and said, hey, I got a friend who has put together a basketball team, a travel team, and they're looking for a place to practice every now and then. And I said, yeah, you know, tell them to send my number. And this very ambitious young man texted me and said, hey, we'd love to talk to you about practicing at our church. And it was Zairek. And over the last few months, I've seen Zairek just exemplify so much maturity and so much just with-ness, if that is a word, as he's put together his basketball team. And honestly, at the time, I just thought it was a group of guys getting together to play a ball. And then, you know, I realized that this was an AU team, and then the thing in the paper came out a few weeks ago. And then, two weeks ago, I had stopped by my office in the evening on one of their practice nights, and I see a tall man coaching up the kids, and I said, I haven't seen him before. So I was just walking, and I went and talked to Zairek, and he said, you know that's Cendarius Thornwell? And I said, what'd you say? He said, that's Cendarius Thornwell? I said, you mean like Carolina Final Four NBA player, New Orleans Pelicans Cendarius Thornwell? He said, yeah. I said, oh, but that would explain the Mercedes in the church parking lot.
That wasn't yours?
Yeah, no, it wasn't mine. So I said, man, how'd you get him? He's like, man, I got connections. And so this young man is a man who has, not only has a lot of talk, but more importantly, has a lot of action to back up his talk. So, man, I'm grateful to be a part of this, and I appreciate the friendship that we have formed over your team using the facility. So I'm proud that my church is the official, one of the official practice facilities of Team 803. So.
Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Council members. I want to say congratulations to Mr. Bradford first and foremost on his many accomplishments, but most of all for having a vision for the future, to keep pressing on and doing the right things, and bringing many other young people with you. That's important because, you know, young people follow young people, but if they're doing the wrong thing, then it won't be good results. So I really, really admire you and appreciate your leadership. I want to say to the Teen Center, Mr. Brian Mays, keep producing them, my man. We need more good children in our communities to step up and be leaders and show others the path and the way to go. So kudos to you, and I want to tell Martin, too, for putting an article in the paper that it was a good article, and I know my family enjoyed reading it. My mom must have read it about five times because she kept calling and telling me about it. But I just, I'm very proud of you, and I don't know you as well, and I don't have a church for you to practice at. But I am very proud because Mr. Mays speaks about you very highly and Miss Roberta. So if they love you, I love you, and if anything that I can do for you moving forward, don't hesitate to contact me. Thank you.
Other comments? Thank you. Mr. Gardner?
I've had the pleasure to meet Zairek. Several months ago, he's referred to me. He's a customer of mine. And but he is just, you know, he came highly recommended, and you just look at the things that he's done. You've read about him in the paper, and this is, you know, just an honor that's so well-deserved. And, you know, keep up the good work.
Other comments? I'll tell you, this is what it's about. This is what Vision 2030 is all about, and this is what the old men at this table are all about, is for a great future for our county and reflect it in the youth of our and the young man, too.
Those two read that.
I'm still under 40, Mr. Chair.
For Zairek, Mr. Gardner says he wants to play you one-on-one in a challenge game when you're ready. All right. So here's what I, yeah, others? Mr. Jones, go right ahead.
Just quickly, Mr. Bradford, I may not know you, but congratulations. Well, but I'll tell you, Brian Mays, I remember the conversation we had years ago when you were, you had this dream, you had this idea in your head about a Girls, Boys, and Girls Club. You did it. You made it happen. You got folks like this with you. Mr. Bradford, and I just want to say thank you for what you do for the youth of this community. Really appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
All right, Mr. Cornell.
I was just thinking back to when I was a little bit younger, whenever we did church ball, we always called it the fight that started with a prayer. Y'all are talking in very nice terms about how you played basketball there at the church. Anyway, I was just thinking during COVID, when things upside down and kids have hardly been able to get together, you're getting it done, and I just think that's a great thing. Continue to lead. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, that just proves COVID didn't beat us, right, Ben? Mr. Russell?
I won't be left out. Congratulations, and I'll just say real briefly, keep being a leader. That's what we need. We need people to lead. Congratulations.
Yeah, buddy. With that, I'm going to propose this way ahead, gentlemen, is that we take the vote, and then we have Mr. Ted Haley here to come up from Kershaw County and Lee County Regional Water Authority, representing the Alumni Association, and he wants to read something, too. Is that okay?
Yes.
So with that, we move to a vote. Once again, Zairek, thank you, and I'll tell you what, you're only being outdone by Jai Hunley, who, to your left, who won State Youth of the Year. Jai, thank you for coming today. Delighted you came. With that, let's move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous. With that, I introduce my good friend, Mr. Haley. Come on up, sir. And if you would introduce any of the alumni there with you today.
Thank you, Chairman Byrne, and thank you, the rest of the council. I'm representing actually tonight Camden Chapter of Jackson High School Alumni and also the Jackson Teen Center. And of course, Kershaw County, Lee County Regional Water Authority is there. I'm not going to go into the leadership traits that this young individual has. I think they all covered in the proclamation. But I do want to say, though, and as most of the council member has commented on, that it is great to have leadership in youth in this county. It is great to know that he's a member of Kershaw County, and he's setting an example for the other youth that he's with. That's very important when you consider the age that we're going through, the age that we're living in. And as all y'all know, peer pressure is stronger than any other pressure there is. And what he's demonstrated is, I think, is a full, advanced accomplishment on his behalf. I would like to recognize another member of the Jackson High School Alumni.
Yeah, please stand up, fellas, ladies.
Brother cool.
But with that, again, I'm not going to repeat what the accomplishments are of Zairek, but I do have a plaque from the Jackson High School Alumni that I would like to present to Zairek. So, Chairman Byrne, whenever you want, see if you can do this.
With that, I think, why don't you give that plaque to him up here, and then we'll have a group photograph? Why don't you? Zairek, if you would come up?
Can we read it, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Can he read it? I'd like to.
Oh, yeah.
The plaque says, "Jackson High School Alumni present to Zachary Bradford in appreciation for outstanding community service to Kershaw County in 2021."
Terrific. Terrific. Brian, if you'd come up and especially bring Jai up as well.
One, two. One, two, three. There we go. I'm good.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
That's cool, man. That's awesome.
Don't let Councilman Snodgrass break your camera.
Yeah. Let's hear it from Mr. Bradford. Please, sir. And raise the microphone up so you can be heard.
There you go. First, I want to give a shout-out to God, who's the head of my life, the ultimate believer of what I do. And I want to thank my second pops back in the back, Mr. Beebe. Man, Mrs. Beebe, y'all just don't know, I grew up all my life without my dad. Eighteen years old, about to turn nineteen, just upcoming summer. I never saw my dad a day in my life. And Mr. Beebe, I tell y'all, it took a lot for me to get to where I'm at right now. I grew up, Mr. Beebe, I used to be a hothead. I used to, I just used to flip out for no reason. And it was never because I was a bad kid, it was just because I was seeking for love. And Mr. Beebe and his wife, Mr. Roberta, they kind of stepped in. I met them years ago. I was a little kid. I kind of met Mr. Beebe, and he just stepped up and helped me out a lot. And Mr. Beebe, I just want to tell you thank you for everything you did for me. First, I want to give a shout-out to my guy right there, Pastor David. He's been number real, number real. Him and Mr. Beebe is like the only two gems around Canada that let you use it. You know what I'm saying? So I appreciate you for coming here. It's like I told you my vision, and you text me every week, telling me how much you support it, and, you know, I just appreciate that.
Thank you, David.
Tim, Tom, Mr. Tom, I appreciate you for the shirts, for every shirt you know I made. Appreciate that. I mean, I'm a talker, but I'm around big people. Well, I just thank y'all for leading the way for us and keep doing what y'all are doing for youth down here, because, believe it or not, the youth down here like me see it. And I always wanted to be the type to be a leader. So I appreciate y'all for everything y'all are doing for the county. God bless you.
Can I say something? You said you didn't want to talk much because you're around big people. Did I hear that right? Let me tell you something. You're the big person in the room.
Yeah, boy.
Congratulations.
Amen.
Yeah, I like hearing words from the heart, and that's what you just spoke. And carry it with you all your life.
Well done. What's that? President Haley back there, what you got, sir? Yeah. Okay, in rebuttal. Ted, come on up.
Oh, no. It's not all about me. I want to tell Jock, congratulations, too, on the Boys and Girls Club Member of the Year. Congratulations.
Chairman Byrne, I would just like to take about 30 seconds and recognize the other members of the Jackson High School Alumni. Y'all please stand and give a shout-out to them.
Oh, terrific. Thank you. Thank you. After that, you want to say, let's adjourn and go home? Thank you very much, Ted. Nice to see you again, old man, and everyone. With that, we rego to approval of minutes. It's at Tab B. It's on Page 5 electronically, and it's on the screen. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion with a second.
Mr. Tucker, and the second is?
Mr. Gardner.
Mr. Gardner, thank you, Sammy. Any discussion of the minutes?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I'll be abstaining as I wasn't present for that meeting.
That's right. I forgot about that. Thank you. Okay, with that, we can move to a vote. With Mr. Snodgrass abstaining, all those wishing to approve, raise your hands, and so signify. And it's unanimous with David abstaining. We move now to administrative updates from Mr. Carpenter of COVID-19. Please, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, as no doubt you're aware, that with spring break over, there's been an uptick again in our 14-day averages. You see that we had bottomed out getting, starting to get close to 100, and now we're back up closer to 200 over the 14-day average. As you see, we have, unfortunately, in April, we pushed back ahead of March and getting close to the November average again for the average number of daily positive results. And in the vaccine recipients, currently, Kershaw County, about 38% vaccinated from the vaccine, though unfortunately, we have slipped from 14th in the state to 20th in the state in that category. And finally, the total number of cases a month to date is 265.
Comments? Anybody? I will share with everybody what I've texted. I think most of you may have seen it. The CDC today is looking to relax some of the restrictions. We'll see where that goes. And I've had a number of conversations with the council of the city of Camden to see where they're going to go. Their emergency declaration lapses or is renewed, one or the other, next Tuesday, so we will know. And as you know, we all have a lot of outdoor activities, and it seems reasonable to expect that there be some change, and that would then affect us here in this building, and we'll turn to Mr. Carpenter to make the necessary changes. Any further discussion there? All right. Good. All right. Well, we do have a high number, 200, which is about where we were last year, and the mortality still continues. I would ask you all to consider talking to your friends about getting the shots. That's where I'm at right now. And until then, we're constrained by the law and the ordinance in Camden to wear the mask in our buildings. So with that, we move on. If you have nothing further, Vic, is that all right?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Question for the administrator. Just wanted to make sure, when I last checked, which I haven't checked this week, Kershaw Health was doing no appointments on Friday?
Yes, sir.
And they're still doing that? And then I think from 3:00 to like 4:30 Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, you can go in with no appointment?
I'm not aware of that, but that's, I know they've been changing and making it more available to people.
Okay. And I just want to put that out for the general public, so if they're worrying about getting an appointment, just show up on Friday or late afternoons the other three days.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we move to the next item on the agenda, which is an executive session. I asked Mr. Gardner to talk about it. It's the topic being economic development updates on Project Falcon and Project Goalpost. Mr. Carpenter? I'm in, Mr. Gardner?
Sir, I'd move that we go into executive session to discuss the proposed location and provisions of services for two industries, Project Falcon and Project Goalpost.
Yeah, very good. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Snodgrass. Discussion, please, any?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add for the record that they also involve contractual legal matters in the proposed location.
Very good. And we would like to have the attorney, Mr. Burgess, and the administrator also present.
That's my question, who all of it includes?
Okay. Is that sufficient? All right. Well, very good. I think we had that, and I will move it to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. We are in executive session to discuss the proposed location and provisions of services for Project Falcon and Project Goalpost. No vote will be taken. No vote will be taken. Mr. Tucker, a second from Mr. Conell, any discussion? All right, very good, let's move to a vote.
One quick thing.
Yeah.
Good stuff.
Okay. Uh, Mr. DeBose, I think I can just declare after a vote, can I not?
You can go out of executive session and just announce that no action was taken or will be taken.
So we're coming out of an executive session, I move into a vote with no action taken. All those in favor signify by raising their hands, and we are returned back into session from executive session. We now return to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is a resolution, it's at Tab C, and I believe it's on the board, right, Danny? And it's at Page Eight in your slide package there, it's the one you and I looked at earlier just a few minutes ago. Mister, it has to do with Project Goalpost. Uh, Mr. Carpenter, I look for you to open the discussion here, please.
Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you tonight a resolution that identifies a project known as Project Goalpost in order to qualify for expenditures eligible for a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes and incentives arranged by Kershaw County. It comes in front of you tonight for your consideration.
Very good, can we have a motion to approve the resolution as read?
Make a motion to approve the resolution as read, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Snodgrass, any discussion? Very good, uh, with that, seeing there is no discussion, we move quickly to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, Jeff, you have your resolution in first reading. All right, now, ordinances, uh, we have the first, item number one is a first reading in title only. There is no enclosure, nothing on the board, and I turn again to Mr. Carpenter to open this one up.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you tonight for first reading in title only, an ordinance that authorizes the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and special source revenue credits for a project known as Project Falcon.
All right, can we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Uh, Mr. Gardner, and a second?
Second.
Second on Project Falcon, any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
That was Mr. Conell, I'm sorry, Mary, okay? Uh, any discussion? Okay, seeing there is none, we move to a vote, all those in favor signify. And it's unanimous, uh, on the first reading. Item number two is a first reading in title only, also, this is Project Goalpost. We have no attachments, uh, can we have a motion to, uh, first of all, Mr. Carpenter, would you introduce it?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you tonight first reading in title only, an ordinance that authorized the execution and delivery of one or more incentive agreements between Kershaw County and a company known as Project Goalpost.
Very good, can we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, and a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gardner, uh, discussion? Uh, I'll just say, for those watching, uh, we're not moving rapidly through this thing. What we're trying to do is position this so we can get to a second reading where more detail can be revealed based on the wishes of these two project leads, which are commercial entities, and they are dealing with our lawyer and with Jeff Burgess and with Vic Carpenter. So just so you know, we don't rush through these things, this is, but this is a procedural vote. Uh, with that, did I get it right, uh, Mr. DeBose?
Yes.
Gosh almighty, that's the first time you agreed with me. All right, with that, we move to a vote, all those in favor, so signify. And it's unanimous, Mary, we move to item number three. First reading in title only on Project Goalpost, again, Mr. Carpenter, can you open that up, please?
Chairman, members of council, you have in front of you tonight for first reading in title only, an ordinance that would allow the county to sell and deliver a piece of land to the project known as Project Goalpost.
Very good, and with that, uh, can we have a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Snodgrass, and a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Conell, uh, any discussion? Uh, yeah, please, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say publicly, want to thank our Economic Development Director and staff, and ask that they continue to press on and keep bringing good news. Thank you, Jeff and Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, other discussion? I would say that this is hard work, and it's been placed, it started about four or five years ago, and it's been facilitated by much of the actions of this council and the Economic Development Office to get stuff ready, and also by the school district that provides trained and ready workforce. So we should give them credit as well. Uh, with that, we're ready to vote, all those in favor, so signify. And it's unanimous, and Mary, you have it on all three. With that, we go to some new business, I see we have the leadership of our fire, our wonderful fire team here. And with that, it's an item of discussion in fire and sewer placed on the agenda by Mr. Jones. Do you want to make a motion to enter into discussion?
I so move.
And we have a second?
Second.
Second, who is that, Sammy?
Yes, sir.
All right, Jimmy, take it away.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you very much. Just give me one second. Uh, I'd like to mention that I've gotten a, some folks telling me they couldn't hear us through our mics that are watching by YouTube or Facebook, so I guess we need to try to talk closer to the mic. I'd like to start by saying that, uh, I think we all are aware that Kershaw County has large sewer and fire service financial needs. Also, Kershaw County is faced with a problem. Kershaw County has more needs than it does money. I feel like that I have a concrete, workable solution to our sewer system financial needs and our fire service financial needs. I support our fire service, I support the twenty-four seven, I just don't necessarily support some of the funding sources that we've talked about, and I think there is also interest on this council going in the same direction after this morning. But, uh, as again, as I said, Kershaw County needs more money to pay for a new sewer plant because the one we have now is running out of capacity. Kershaw County's leadership has run new sewer lines along Highway Twelve to bring more sewer to our plant that is already pretty much loaded with capacity. Kershaw County's sewer system needs to be upgraded to a four MGD, I think we're a two MGD at the present. This will cost somewhere to the tune twelve to fifteen million dollars. The debt service on that amount is nine hundred thousand dollars roughly somewhere in there a year. That is on top of what we already are paying in O, which is millions. Taxes spend appears to be sometimes council's only solution under consideration. This is the direction of Kershaw County unless council thinks outside of the box. The box we need to get out of is the mindset of government being the only provided service. The solution to our problem is staring us right in the face, and this council has refused up until now to even consider, and I hope there will be a consideration after this. And, and Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, you pressed me at the last budget work session to present an option other than creating new fees and raising taxes. Well, tonight, I am here to say Kershaw County can have money, the money it needs if we get out of the sewer business. The sewer system costs us, you know, as I said, on the bond payments, somewhere nine hundred thousand dollars a year, eight forty-six, nine fifty-three, whatever, and, you know, we've got the B, the bond from two thousand eight, the bond for two thousand sixteen, the bond for two thousand eight B, then we've got the two thousand twelve bond, you know? And if we were to do what I'm talking about here tonight, this could also pay off our sewer debt service, and we, it could be freed up to build fire stations and/or to purchase equipment for the firemen. If we were to consider to sell our sewer system, we will no longer be saddled with the sewer debt or the sewer cost. If we let a private-owned and operated company in Kershaw County look at it, we can charge an annual franchise fee and tax the value of the sewer system. This will result in more money that Kershaw County can use for the other needs such as the fire service. SCWU, South Carolina Water Utilities, already pays Kershaw County two million dollars a year in taxes for sewer plant, for their sewer plant. That money is currently being used to run our sewer system, including repairing of old lines. I say tonight, I feel it is irresponsible for county council to blindly go along with a taxing spend without once giving this proposal that I'm making here tonight consideration. Money freed up by the sale of the sewer system and the new taxes from the value of the sewer system could be used for the fire service. That money could solve the fire service's funding issues. More money, more county revenue without more fees or taxes and a much better funded fire service. Additional taxes and fees for sewer and fire are not the answer. Additional taxes and fees hurt the disabled and the senior citizens the worst. As Mr. Carpenter has said here, fees are regressive, fees fall hardest on those who are least able to pay. In the fire district, a senior citizen who owns a hundred thousand dollar home pays fifty-two dollars in total county taxes, and a two hundred thousand dollar house pays one hundred and four in total county taxes. The same senior citizen who owns a hundred thousand dollar home in the fire district or a two hundred thousand dollar house in the fire district, and who owns, would you say, two vehicles, that's not unreasonable, is paying a hundred seventy-nine dollars in county fees per year. I just don't think that's right. In my mind, the refusal to, to even look at or entertain the sale of the sewer system and get better sewer and additional county funds amounts to Kershaw County Council taking hard on, not doing it, amounts to Kershaw County taking hard on money from the taxpayers and pouring it into a bottleless pit that we've been dealing with for many, many years. I feel that if Kershaw County refuses to evaluate this opportunity to reduce its debt and secure annual funding, then we have truly done a disservice to the citizens of Kershaw County. And let me remind my colleagues on council as well, we are at the tail end of one of the worst pandemics in our history, in our generation. People have lost their jobs, businesses have closed, and we on county council, I feel like have the audacity to even entertain one trying to increase the millage, which bill was shot down in the senate. And then if that doesn't work, to talk about possibly some large fees. And I'll go further to say, without even offering the citizens of Kershaw County an opportunity to vote on an advisory referendum. There is none so blind as he who cannot see, and I'll say that Kershaw County's council's blindness to this opportunity is trying our souls and robbing our citizens of Kershaw County and their hard earned money, when I know without a doubt in my mind it's not necessary. Most senior citizens pay more fees than their tax bills. So that's, to sit here and think about creating another fee is just, to me, I just don't, don't get it, don't understand it. There are options out there, this is a very valuable option, and let me leave you with this. More government is not the solution, more government is the problem. So I hope that my colleagues will consider this, I didn't want to blindside anybody. I was not going to call for a vote tonight, but I am going to put it on the agenda at the next county council meeting, Mr. Carpenter. You would make sure to have a vote on that, and, uh, we can move from there as far as research and trying to do what we need to do. General, I appreciate your time. That is my proposal, I wanted to give you a heads up on it, as I said earlier, and, uh, thank you for your time.
We certainly put that on the agenda, Mary, certainly, thank you. Uh, comments? Okay, all right, thank you, Jimmy, uh, Mr. Conell.
I just have a couple of questions, if it's going to be the agenda for next time, you know, I like to research stuff and try to figure out the date on it. You weren't, were you proposing, I just want to make sure I'm clear, were you suggesting that any of the funds from the sale of a sewer system or recurring revenue could go towards fire operating costs?
Well, this is what we have, we have, I think the plant that we have existing right now, the South Carolina Water Utilities pays us about two million dollars a year. And that two million dollars a year is going to, it pays for our upgrades and our services of our sewer system. And of course, if we were not to be in the sewer business, that money we would free up. And also, if we had the, the bonds paid off, that money would be freed up as well, too, that we could use towards fire, EMS, or any other possibility in the, uh, which the county has needs for.
Okay, my question was just a little different, and I want to make sure I just understand, so, Mr. Carpenter, fire operations, does that have to be paid for by the mill?
It doesn't have to be paid for by the mill, but it is currently paid for with its millage and any possible fees that might be put on. So it's got to be, because it's a separate, independent district, it's got to have its own revenue source.
So could, could you use something like Mr. Jones proposing, if you had?
You couldn't take sewer millage, which is assessed on one part of the county for a specific purpose, and use that to run a fire department, say?
In the hypothetical, say that it was sold, and then it just became millage that went to the general fund or FLO, or whatever the arrangement would be, could you use, my understanding with the, we have a fire issue on funding twenty-four hour, and that's what we're trying to figure out full time throughout the county, right? So either there's millage or there's fee, as I understand it, to solve that issue?
As things currently stand, Act three eighty-eight would limit our ability to raise, we're only able to raise millage three tenths for the fire. So the sewer millage is two point nine mills, so we couldn't take two point nine and move it into fire as currently our environment exists.
Okay, so, but so our issue would persist then, is I guess my point. Even if, even if we had a windfall or got some other monies from a sewer sale, would our, um...
I believe what I'm understanding, Mr. Jones.
Paying for employment, actually, would our paying for employment be solved by that problem, or will we still have to go the legislative route or the fee route?
In order to raise millage, we would still have to go through some kind of a legislative process. Now, if I understand, Mr. Jones, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, so tell me if I'm wrong.
I will.
Um, what I believe he is suggesting is that also, that the money that is currently paid as a fee in lieu could be perfect, because that is councils to control a fee in lieu, same way that we did with EMS and that fee in lieu to operate EMS. So I believe he's saying that we could take part or all of the fee in lieu, and if it's enough, use that over in, in fire.
So that would be legal?
Yes, it might be.
Okay, and then?
Because council controls that source of funds.
And, and kind of like, I'm sorry to, I don't mean to monopolize the time, guys, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it, hopefully it's useful to talk about. So like EMS, we, and it could be good or bad, but we might be beholden to, if it's a private entity, a potential sale or some other transaction that, that may or may not impact that funding source, would that be right?
Yes. The same thing could happen, if a nonprofit did control it, then that money would go away.
Okay, and then, Mr. Jones, it sounds like you've done a lot of research on it, I was just wondering, you mentioned you feel like we need to go to four MGD, that's the right term, isn't it? Four million gallons a day?
Correct.
Do we have any commitments at all, or do we know if they're willing to do that?
You talking about from sewer companies?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I've talked to one, of course, if you put something up for sale, you're going to have to go out and run it through procurement, obviously. But, yeah, I have talked to one, um, company, and they would be very interested in evaluating, working with our administrator, working with our county attorney to just see what we could work out. And that has not been done yet. I, I will say this, though, going back about the bonds, you know, we had, we had a great work session this morning. You know, I, I did some research on the bond issues that we talked about, I called Vic back and spoke with him as well, too. You know, we're talking about debt service when we're talking about the bonds, and we talk about paying that off, which is a good thing, I've always felt like it was. We may lower the debt service, but, but Act three eighty-eight, as you said, uh, Mr. Carpenter, does still come into play because, you know, operations millage is what we'd have to use for what we're talking about doing. So if we, we just could not go and flip the savings from the debt service over to the millage for operations because Act three eighty-eight might not allow enough to produce what we need to produce when it comes to fire or sewer, am I correct on that?
As things currently stand, yes, sir.
And let me say this, too, guys, gentlemen up here, I'm not saying this is not problematic. I mean, it's got its issues that would have to be worked out. I'm just bringing an issue before you that's a different thought, something that I would like council to, or the administrator, whatever, to look into, and certainly you guys, and, and Mr. Conell, I appreciate your questions and your dialogue tonight. That's how we try to understand it and move forward, so I do appreciate that, and, uh, that's why I'm just hoping that you can do some research. I'll help any way I can, and we can have it on the agenda, talk about it more the next meeting, and take a vote. Now, I'm not going to put something on the agenda that I know is going to automatically fail. I think that most of you up here are willing to look at an alternative, a different solution. And that's what I plan to do, bring it back, and we'll put it on the table, we'll talk about it, and if we so see fit to ask the administration move forward with it, we will.
Mr. Chairman, I just had two more questions.
Sure, sure.
So, and I just wrote these down as you were talking, presenting this initially, Jimmy. Running through the hypothetical, if there was a transaction like this, a private company is going to have shareholders or some private entity they have to answer to and be profitable on some level. So I'm wondering if the particular entity you're interested in, have they agreed to any type of rate or fee limitations? Or would there be something? any type of rate or fee limitations, or would there be something that would let us know as we talk to constituents in, in future years, even if they're bracketed, that there wouldn't be significant rate or fee jumps?
This, this company is very interested in this, and we have had no sit downs with them. So, but I can tell you that they're very interested in just getting, gathering information, the fact that they pay us two million dollars in taxes a year that we use to fund the sewer and, and fund the upgrades, that would be freed up, we wouldn't have that debt anymore to, to manage. And then if we were to be able, and I believe that it might could work out that way, if we looked at it and assessed it, that the bonds, we wouldn't have to worry about paying the bonds, the bonds could be paid off, the sewer plant would be ran by a private company. And I just think there'd be a lot of money there that we could generate through thinking outside the box, other than just trying to create a new fee. But I will say this, county council, I was very impressed this morning at the budget works, I mean, excuse you, at the budget work session on the bond conversation we had, and also the comments that y'all made about fees, because we know taxes, we can't do it, millage, it's just not permissible with Act 388 in play. But I do appreciate y'all having that conversation this morning, Mr. Brazel and all of you. So.
All right, and then the, oh, I'm sorry. Last question I had was, just how well the model has worked throughout the state, out of the forty-six some odd counties in South Carolina, do we know, or maybe this will be a question for that research, if it's worked really well, and this is the majority, you know, are we in the severe minority, are we in the majority? Where are we at on having a county-owned sewer?
Well, let me say this, and I'll certainly yield to Mr. Carpenter, this and Mr. DeBose, but I know Richland County has private-public partnerships for many, many years, and they've had success, and, and you know, we talk about, well, we're going to lose control, the control of our growth, no we won't, we, we, the county owns planning and zoning. Planning and zoning operates under the county, we set the policies, you know, we would still control the growth, it's just we would not be in the sewer business.
Mr. Tucker had a question, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jones, I want to, this question is meant to make sure that we've got our numbers straight. You keep using the number two million dollars, and I think from my understanding that that's less now, and it's studied decreasing that we're getting from those services, and seventy percent of that goes to the school district, so that won't leave us about maybe six hundred thousand dollars if it was two million. So my, my question to you, and Mr. Carpenter, correct me if my numbers are wrong, is with your proposal that's coming, is it going to come with some hardcore numbers? Because my question goes to where, if you're planning on selling this sewer, will it be sold outright, where the county will make a profit? Will it be leased for so many years, or will we just be giving it away?
Well, as I said, we could look at a franchise, or we could work it any way we wanted, if there was a strong interest in doing that, and that's where the leaders of the county would have to sit down with the company and look at it, assess it, and show those, you know, show those amounts in the next proposal. But, you know, Sammy, I know you've met with them from time to time before, I've, I feel having a conversation with these executives, I truly feel that they are extremely interested in our county, and, and without running any numbers, they were excited about the fact that they felt they could buy it from us, it could even possibly be a little bit more than what we owe on it, so you'd have some money there that we could put aside, and then we, we certainly, but whether it's the school, whether it's us, bottom line is, they're paying about two million dollar taxes, at least, that's what I got from the county. If it's going less, I can tell you this, if they purchased our sewer system, we would certainly have to reevaluate and see what the tax base would be at that point in time.
Other comments?
Let me just say this, too. Gentlemen, I'm trying my best to try to figure a way that we can provide the services that the fire district needs, the sheriff's department, EMS, roads, county roads, I mean, public works, without just having to constantly go back to the taxpayers, whether it's a fee or whether it's a tax. I will say tonight, I'll be on the record, I am not going to vote for an increase in fee. Of course, we cannot even introduce a millage, because it's, it's not permissible with Act 388 to, to raise it to what we'd need to raise it to, to fund the system. But that's my proposal, guys, and I hope y'all see some interest in at least researching it. And as I said, Mr. Carpenter, I'll be kidding with you, too, this week as well, so we can try to crunch some numbers when we come back.
Let me just do some housekeeping. Jimmy has asked to put it on the agenda, that is, that's certainly going to be done. We've got eight weeks, nine weeks to the end of the fiscal year and the beginning of the next, and so we need to work a budget. So Jimmy, I'd ask you to work with Vic and Mr. DeBose to understand what it means when someone buys something when we haven't had an offer, in terms of timing, okay? That, not even presupposing the council would agree to it, we haven't had an offer. So I would just ask you to bring that into your thinking when you come to see us at, at the next meeting, okay?
Well, I will, Mr. Chairman, also, if you remember, though, I also brought a member of South Carolina Water Utilities here, and they spoke to us as well, you know, some while back, and this is something that I've been talking about for years, I mean.
My point is, the second one, which is tied to the first, is we got to do a budget, and we got to do one, you know, in the next six, seven weeks, and how fast can we move this?
And, and you are correct, but council can do what council wants to do.
And then, secondly, that gets to the next point, we have no valuation of what we think we're worth.
And that would be part of the negotiations. If we're, if we're serious about this, that would have to be done.
And having done this kind of stuff in my other life, outside these walls, that takes a while.
Well, everything takes a while, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'm just trying to help here.
Well, I understand, but I'm just saying.
So I'm asking you to can put that in your calculations, in terms of how that's presented, okay?
Sure, I certainly will. And as I said, I truly believe that if we want this to happen, we can make it happen, but there are certainly details you have to work out. There are details to have to work out with what we talked about this morning with the bonds.
Right.
You know?
Right.
We left out here with the bonds, thinking, okay, all our problems are solved with fire, you know, funding, but it's not. It's not, because, once again, it goes back, like Russell and I talked to earlier, you may pay off the debt millage, but it didn't try to transfer that to the general fund millage so you could pay for fire, but because of Act 388, we're limited on what we can.
Yeah, the logic is, is fairly compelling, and, and so what I'm saying is, in terms of having to do a county budget, and then getting an offer, and then getting an evaluation to make sure that we get value for money, that, that's more complex than, than the concept that I've heard today.
It, it is complex, but, Mr. Chairman, I will say this, too, I think, no pun intended, just my personal belief, I think that using the budget as an excuse not to do it is just an excuse because you don't want to do it.
Yeah.
And I'm not speaking to you personally, I understand, that's just my belief.
Very good, and, and I, I think I've laid out just some real cold, hard business logic. Mr. Sniggrass.
Mr. Jones, do you know, do you know how, so the company that, that presented to us, they, they operate water systems in Hilton Head and that part of the state, do you know how quickly they, they raised their rates once they acquired, once they acquired those systems? Did you talk to them about that?
We did, but I'll be honest with you, I can't remember, but it was talked about, but that's something that we would all, I'm trying to think back what they said, they would be competitive, and they would, actually, in some places, they're probably lower than us, some places probably higher, but I don't see, I don't see them skyrocketing their prices.
Yeah, well, I mean, I asked the guy when he was here two months ago, and he, he quickly said they had to, and then he quickly went into some speech about some other things, because he wanted to cover it up, that they had to quickly raise rates. And, and that's, I, I'm just being honest with you, I'm, I'm open-minded, so I'm going to look at this, but I'm just at face value, some of my concerns that are that, in the shadow of the failed VC summer nuclear plant that Saint T. Cooper's has found themselves in as well with, with SCANA, you know, a private, private utilities, I, I don't know, I just, I've got, I guess I'm a little, little hesitant to make sure that we don't, we're not in a situation where we give away, not give away, but we let go of a system and it goes into a private partnership, and the only thing between, the only thing between an increase on our citizens in rates is the Public Service Commission, and they don't really, sometimes they don't have the best track, track record of, of having the best interest for, for the citizens. So that's, you know, I'm going, I'm going to look at it, but I'm just, just saying that out, out the gate, those are just, those are the concerns that I have that I'm wanting to get the answers to as, as we look at this. As far as the millage, you are right, we, we can't raise the millage, but it's not dead. It's, it's dead, it got second reading.
But we have to do it by a budget now, remember? I mean, you're talking about millage isn't dead, but it still had to be handled, I mean, I was just told that this issue was budget-driven.
Yeah, I'm just saying, but the idea of switching the fire over to millage is not, is not dead. It's, it'll, it's in the senate at second reading, so next year, it'll come back around, and it'll be at second reading next year, it's kind of how the, the cycle works, and we have a great delegation who's worked hard on it, I see Ms. Gwen out there, she's our liaison, I know she and her office have been working really hard on, on that for us, and, and I was, I was thankful as how far it got. So we'll, you know, we'll see where it gets next, in, next year, as it, as it moves forward. So, so, you know, it's, that's not, that's not a dead end, is what I'm saying. So, and, and so then my other question is that I'm trying, when I make a decision on this, is, you know, I don't want, I don't want the short-sightedness of money now to cloud our judgment from what could be five, ten, fifteen years down the road. Fifteen years down the road, we have a sewer system that we don't have control over, and it's, it's controlled by a, it's controlled by a private entity, you know, and what, is, is that a good fit for our citizens fifteen years down the road? So that's, those are some of the things that I'm looking at, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just letting, I'm just being honest with you, I'm going to look at it with an open mind, but those out the gate, those are the concerns. And you're right, we do control zoning, we do control growth, but here's what I see. If we would sell the system, but then we tell Mr. Connelly, hey, we don't want any more growth, well, we got a private company over in that part of this, of the county, who's like, well, hold on, we bought this sewer system, and our mission, you know, they say their mission is to, you know, is to give people water, and that's part of it, but at the end of the day, they're, they're here to make money, so they're going to say, hold on, I can't, we can't make any money if your county is not permitting more developments, which, and from my logic, would say that existing users would probably begin to see a rate increase, because they've got to make money. So those are just, again, great idea, I love the innovative, the, the way that you've, you've looked for an innovative idea, and I'm going to look at it, I'm just, those are just some of the questions in the next two weeks that I'm going to be looking for.
Well, and, and those questions, and I, I know the administrator's writing them down, and he'll work with the company, and we'll get it, we'll also have an executive from the company come as well, and, and talk with you and express their, because I don't think there were a whole lot of questions asked the last time he was here. So, but I, listen, the fact that we may or may not agree, I appreciate you, your, your dialogue, your, your discussion on this issue, that's where we start, and let's, let's see if we can get something going and answer your questions fully, and meet, once again, some of the executives from the utility company, and go from there.
Okay. Mr. Brazel?
I, I was just going to touch on the fact that y'all were initially talking about regulation, they, and you touched on it eventually, the Public Service Commission, I think, Jimmy, that, that was who would regulate the, the rates and that sort of thing, so.
Well, here, here's what I do know, guys. As I said earlier, we've got more needs than we've got money, and what I want to see, and I, I know that a lot of you up here feel the same way, what I don't want to see is a new fee generated, when we already have folks, senior citizens, who are paying twice the amount in fees on their tax bills as they are taxes. So I appreciate your time, and I appreciate y'all looking at that, and, you know, we'll try to put something together and bring back before you at the next meeting.
Yeah, I hope this has been helpful to you, Jimmy, as you bring that together.
Well, it has been, and I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the fact that you had questions and you asked, as I said, no matter what we do, folks, no matter what we do with this situation, it's going to have its issues and have its problems, we just have to be willing to work through them, or say this is how we're going to do it, and move in another direction.
Very good.
Thank you.
Are we ready to go to council briefings? I think so. Mr. Gardner, you're going to lead off.
I just have one thing, I was doing some reading the other day, and I came across this quote that I thought was pretty appropriate, it said, "We've never lived in such evil times. Our leaders have never been so corrupt, and the social fabric has never been so decayed." You know, you'd think you'd read that in the state paper the other day, it was written fifty-eight hundred years ago. Babylon, Mesopotamia, it was written, written on a Chaldean stone. But just, I think it just shows you that history does repeat itself, because I think we're in those times ourselves right now, but it was written fifty-eight hundred years ago, but it also shows you that fifty-eight hundred years we've survived, we persevered, I don't see why we can't come together and work together and work out our problems, because we have problems, believe me, lots of problems, and not just R and D problems, we've got lots of problems, but I think that fifty-eight hundred years ago, the same things are going on that were going on in our country now, but I think that we can overcome those, but I thought it was interesting when I read that, I couldn't believe that it was written in thirty-eight hundred B.C., fifty-eight hundred years ago, and so how appropriate it is today. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I think you were there, weren't you? Mr. Brazel, sir.
Well, a couple of things I'd like to touch on. I'd like to thank the gentlemen, it's been brought to my attention, Tom Gardner, Sammy Tucker, and Dennis Orage, laying the groundwork for some of these projects that are coming to fruition through economic development, and, and Mr. Jones, and whoever else may have worked on those projects, Mr. Sniggrass, and Ben. I just want to say thanks, because I think the county is about to see some really good things from, from the work that's been done years ago, well, well before I was here, and I wanted to thank Mr. Jones for, for all the research and development, and that he put into his presentation tonight, and we want to be open-minded to his thoughts, and that's, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Russell. Mr. Connel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to share a brief word tonight about a great member of Kershaw County who passed away. Some of you might know Brad Branham.
Yeah.
Brad lived in Elgin for many, many years, he lived in Camden before that. Brad went to Camden High School, and one of the things I loved about him most was he's a two-time state champion wrestler at Camden High School, actually, one of the first in Kershaw County, and he was an inspiration for many youth coming up that competed and followed his example. He worked forty-six years at Wildchem, I considered him an uncle, though he was a second cousin, but that's kind of par for the course in Kershaw County in many ways. He was a great leader, and to see the legacy of his life today at his funeral was such a blessing, so many people there that loved him, such a large and expansive family. It's impressive that he's raised doctors and other professionals, but the content of their character means so much more to he and Rita. He was the son of Alfred and Betty Branham, that actually lived off Latchcock Road, not too far from you, Jimmy, and just an outstanding man. So I hope, if you knew him, you'll take a moment to reach out to the family and share any positive experiences you had with him, he blessed everybody's life. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Mr. Connel, I agree with you one hundred percent, great man, good family, and thank you for those words. No, no further comment.
Mr. Sniggrass?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council, just a few, a few things to wrap up, congrats again to Zairek Bradford and all the team that was, that was with him, and the, the good work that our, our Boys and Girls Club does here locally. Also want to make everyone aware that the DHEC COVID testing site, which is currently at our parks and rec department, is, will be moving next week, May, it'll be moving out to East Camden, it'll be moving to the parking lot of, of my church, Camden First Church in Nazarene, and they'll be utilizing that parking lot. So just making this everywhere, that's, that's where, it'll be the only testing site in the county, so just want to make everyone aware of that. Two weeks ago, we, we organized a East Camden community pickup, had members of neighborhoods out there from White Pines Neighborhood, Valley Park, those who live in town, and, and other areas, and we picked up Dicey, Dicey Fort, Dicey Creek, Hell Street, Old Stage Coach, Maverick Hill, and fifty-nine bags litter alone on Old Stage Coach, we did about a hundred plus bags total, and learned that whoever litters, they like playing the lottery and drinking Crown Royal liquor, so that's what I learned, and I guess they did. I guess they, yeah, well, but I didn't see any little purple bags, it was just the bottles, yeah, no, I didn't, no, that wouldn't be a good look for me, I don't think. So want, want to say, uh, thank you.
So I want to say thank you Director Cato for bringing out some support. And the truck showed up shining, tires shining and everything, so I appreciate that. Appreciate the Sheriff's Department as well, offering us some support, and the 20-plus volunteers who came out to help us, to help us pick that up. And then also want to just, as we move forward with economic development, just tell everyone to stay tuned, and we'll be able to share a lot of those things that are coming our way, and just excited about all the things that are happening. So that concludes my remarks, thanks, guys.
Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members. Two quick things. One is, and this might be a little bit of your thunder, Mr. Carpenter, but I'm going to take it because of my position with the family. But we not only lost this week, or over the weekend, another soul, but we actually lost a county employee, Mr. Howard Sumter. Many of you have seen him around here in the building, up at the government center. And I know Mr. Carpenter will probably expound on this a lot further. But keep his family in your prayers. He was a good, hard-working man, a good-spirited man. And unfortunately, went to the hospital Friday, and he passed Saturday. And so just keep that family in prayer as you go out through your week. Mr. Chairman, there was a lot of thank yous that went around, and I was reluctant and did not, I wasn't reluctant, but I did not say what I needed to say. I want to thank you for all that is going on in the economic development world as well. I don't know what the rest of them do, but I know 2, 3 o'clock at night, you're up because I'm talking to you. And I appreciate the wheels always turning, and you always trying to figure out how to make things work. So with, thanks to everyone else that's got a part in economic development. I want to say a personal thanks to you. That concludes my report.
Very good, thank you. We're going to beat COVID, we're beating it, and we're beating it, we're crushing it. And if you saw Zarek today, that showed the spirit of this county. And there's so many other things that just say we're a great place to live, work, worship, raise our families. One year ago, this meeting, one year ago, this body of men voted on $1 million to keep our small businesses going. And some people think that's inappropriate, but those businesses by and large are open today. And I went around yesterday and today and Saturday and talked to a number of those people who got our grants, and it shows how this county council, this body of men, may we always not agree, but we may always are devoted to our population. And I just want to congratulate you, one year ago. EDO, thank you very much, you're showing that we've still got it. We've got our mojo, we got it stride. It's taken us four and a half years to get to this point, and a lot of discussion, but we made it. Let me give you another example. Mr. Sniggrass has already touched on about how volunteers have popped up all over the place. Mr. Brazel's about ready to lead one, too. And Jill Wolfe and the crowd, along with Steve Zobel, this weekend at Lugolf are going to be leading along with the Optimist Club, right, Jimmy?
Midi 514 Lash...
Yep.
Midi at 514 Lashcott Road.
There you go. And also, I think it's Shoney's too, so what a great, this just shows what a great county we have. I'm just telling you. I mean, the next point is, this weekend, and token of which, on the 1st of May, we've got the Relay for Life is back. Holy Smokes, that's a giving Christian organization. I've mentioned the Optimist Club cleanup, but we've got a Mayfest going on in Boykin with Wayne Belcher. And then, of course, we've got Jam for the Soul, I think I got it right, at Veterans Park. And on the 3rd of the May, the American Legion's going to erect a flagpole at the Veterans Park. Just stuff's going on, what a county, and COVID just didn't get in our way. I'm just so proud of you. Next point, a little bit of housekeeping. Mary has gone, I have to start tracking the Kershaw County Health Services District roster, if you can start posting that. Whether the legislation, Katie, we're going to need your help here, the legislation passes in the House and the Senate or not, we're going to have to address the expired or to-be-renewed positions of the Health Services District. I talked to Mr. Ogden today, and he assures me on his side, and everybody knows how good Darrell is in the State House, that he's going to move it down the road, Sammy. So I think we got some good luck on the Health Services District statute. But there's, I think, only a two-week window to get it done. So y'all cheer on our legislative delegation to get it done, and then we'll have the nominations back in here to you, and then we'll work out how we move forward on renewing and rejuvenating and supporting our great Health Services District. So with that, I think I'm about done, except to say, get your shots, get your shots, 38%. With that, Mr. Carpenter, over to you.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, a few items for you tonight. First, I wanted to introduce to you a new program that we're doing with our employees. We call it KC Works Well. As you know, when COVID came, and we spent a lot of time looking at how we operate as an organization, and how we can be better serving our citizens and ourself. And out of that extended period of time that we spend looking and thinking, one of the issues that came forward was very clearly is that our ability to provide comprehensive services and outstanding customer services to our resident is significantly dependent on the well-being of our employees. So with that, we reached out to Livwell Kershaw for some guidance and direction on what we could start doing for an employee wellness program.
Good.
Catherine Johnson, their director, worked with a 10-member team of Kershaw County employees to begin identifying things we could do. We then reached out and began working with the South Carolina Hospital Association, and with their help identified four priority areas that we're going to be focusing on with our employees. As you're going to be seeing through the coming years, we're going to be working on wellness culture, physical activity, nutrition, mental and emotional health, and policies, all that would affect and benefit the employees as they try to go about doing their job. We're working these areas right now, and as these initiatives continue, I'll keep sharing with them. This goes along with our Enhance You program and our KC Solutions program, all designed to include and involve our employees in how this county can operate better and be more significantly able to provide assets to our citizens. You're going to be seeing in the next coming weeks that the South Carolina Hospital Association will be recognizing Kershaw County for this effort, and using us as an example across the state of how wellness can be incorporated into the daily work life and what you do. So I'm very proud of that, and I look forward to sharing that with you as it continues to develop. Also, the chairman just mentioned the flag-raising ceremony on Watery River Veterans Park. We'll be doing that on Monday, May the 3rd at 2:00. Everyone is encouraged to be out there, as the flagpole will be dedicated, and the flag will be raised. And then we'll be having our ribbon cutting, finally, at the Elgin Community Park. We just got that finalized this afternoon. So Friday, May the 14th, 2:00 p.m., the senator can be there, and we will be getting more information out to you. But that will be the date that we will be holding that event. And that's it, my report.
All right, attorney?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And with that, I think I entertain a motion to dismiss.
Motion adjourned, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Connel, thank you. Any discussion? I think we next meet as a body on the 11th of May. And with that, we'll move to a vote, all those in favor signify. And it's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you, very productive.